All right, so a couple guidelines. We welcome the opportunity to address the board. We like to keep the comments brief. I know there's a lot of people here tonight, so you certainly are welcome to address the board. We would like you to address the board as a whole and not any individuals on the board, and we're also not going to get into any back report. A lot of times if things are shared, the board needs to take that into consideration and then have time to deliberate and then have a response. So one other thing too is there's been some inquiries. I just want to make sure to clear up that on the agenda tonight, we're going to be discussing the action that was taken at the March vote on the Warren article. So we're not actually going to be getting into debate about the policy tonight, the J-BAB policy. This is just discussing the intentions of the voters from the March vote. So I just wanted to make sure I cleared that up before we got into public comment. So opportunity for the public?
Mr. Jonathan Bydner?
Yes, sir. Hi, Kevin Verbal. I'm one of your three state reps. I live in Deerfield. I was here a couple of months ago to introduce myself. That was before the March elections, and I know you've got two new board members, so I just wanted to come in, introduce myself again, let me know that if there's anything I can do, constituent service, I'd be more than happy to take that off. Please feel free to reach out and give us a hand. Last time I saw you, I heard you were the member of the...
Thanks, Kevin. Sure. Absolutely.
If any of the members have any questions, it won't happen in the table. If you don't want to do that, I'll refer you to a little chair.
Yep, no, we appreciate that. Do you guys have questions with Kevin? We appreciate you coming by. It's helpful to have state reps come by. Joe Doer, he used to do that a couple of times. We still don't know who it was before Joe, but since I've been on the board, he was with Joe Doer, and he would come by once in a while as well, so...
My apologies. I don't think it would be safe for you all to hear, but I'm going to sit down for as long as I can as public committee.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate you coming by.
Thank you.
Sharon Hewitt, Highland Street, Candia. I would just like to, I know that you will be discussing the intent of the petition warrant or the petition warrant article for the public hearing for the J-BAB policy. Just in conversations, you know, this is my feeling, I don't know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not the back of the book, but is that, you know, I know, we've already heard that Becky and Kim were for the, were for the policy, and Matt, you had voted against it. So we pretty much know that. Dana, you started the petition, so I'm pretty sure you're against that policy. I think, I don't think there's anything that I could say here tonight or at a public hearing that would change your minds. So unless you're going to be honest with everybody and say, you know what, if there's a majority of people in favor of it, I'm going to change my mind, then please save this town the ugliness of the last public hearing. I'm asking that as a board. If you, you probably, I mean, you already know how you're going, what you think. You have said that the board didn't listen to what the majority of the people said last time, and those are the, you're saying because of the, because they passed it. So my feeling is that to go ahead and have that other public hearing when you pretty much already have your ideas of how the policy should be, you know, it opens the doors for people hanging up those pedophile signs. Pedophiles are coming, Matt Priest, the pastor, who came into our town and hung those up and passed those around. It's ugliness, and remember last time, Nicole got spit on at one point. I just, there's no, there's really no reason for it unless you can honestly sit there and look the audience in the face and say, if the majority of the people at the public hearing support it, I will change my decision. You know, you have to take your best input, what you know best, and make those decisions. That's what the board did last time. Some people had an issue with that, I get that, but I honestly expect that you're going to make the best decision that you feel. I'm not going to agree with that. I would ask respectfully that you do not repeal or replace the J-BAB policy, but as far as the public hearing, sorry, as far as the public hearing goes, I would ask that you don't hold that. Thank you.
In the back?
Me or...
Mary? No, Mary, go first.
Well, she can go first.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Linds Jakows. I'm the campaign manager of Freedom New Hampshire. We're the group...
One second, real quick, I'm sorry. We need to get addresses. Becky, so we need names and addresses as well, please.
Sure. 62 Bedford Street, Manchester, 0311.
So...
Say your name again, I'm sorry.
Linds, L-I-N-D-S, last name J-A-K-O-W-S.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. We could debate. And I want to have a private conversation here. The question is, for non-residents, this is a day, my advice to the chair is that people have First Amendment rights and they, they should be heard. And they should be heard.
Thank you.
We did have this conversation with our attorneys, and our attorneys are of the same mindset that I'm tired of living in America.
Yep. Okay. Please proceed.
Thanks. Freedom New Hampshire is an organization that's working to continue to build support for transgender nondiscrimination protections across the state of New Hampshire. And I'm here to stand in strong support of policy J-BAB, and I strongly urge you not to revise or to rescind it. Transgender people, our families and our supporters across the state are continuing to meet with lawmakers all across the state at house parties this month to build support on all levels, including business, faith, communities. We all value safety for students. The good news is that 18 other states and 200 municipalities have already passed as very broad protections in employment, housing, public accommodations, many school districts as well, without any increased bathroom incidents. Criminal behavior will continue to be categorized and dealt with as such, however, transgender people are not criminal. The New Hampshire Coalition Abandons Domestic and Sexual Violence strongly supported the bill that was before the state legislature, or in the beginning of March, and I urge you to please stand with us on the right side of history and for transgender freedom. This issue is not going away. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Felix?
Yes, Felix Shepard, 682 North Road. We're kind of baffled in a sense that we're giving away our country today, since we have two different parties fighting each other. Fighting for what? I don't know. The last meeting that they had, Jim and Abby, I was when all this robbing started with transgender. We didn't have an issue with transgender before this board that came up. I think what came to head is nobody on the school board listened. The people weren't against having something to protect our transgender kids. There wasn't a person there that ever spoke badly against it. Every kid has a right to be safe. I think the biggest issue that I thought about the last year is we had a vote where we changed school members, board members. And we, that vote came for a reason, because the other members did not listen to the people that night. We had over 400 signatures, and the majority of the people at that meeting didn't want it crammed down our throats. We didn't say we didn't want something to protect our children. We just wanted to have an opportunity to review it and maybe talk with this town, the school board, and come up with something that we were comfortable with. And right now, nobody's working with anybody at all, anywhere. Everybody seems to think it's every battle. You know, every kid, it has a right to have support. It doesn't matter if it's a male, female, or anything in between. Nobody that night was saying, we don't want them to be here. Thank God, you know, we mostly learned how to deal with it. I feel sorry for the kids that do. It's gotta be crazy to be inside their body. But when it's crammed down your throat, that's not what America's all about. It's not what this town actually is about. I think we just want somebody to listen and say, hey, we have an opportunity to really review it ourselves, maybe talk with the school board members, talk with the rest of the people in town, say, hey, why can't we make this change? They're talking about all these other communities that passed it. We really don't care what they pass. This is our town, not their town. And if we can just get everybody to pull together and listen to that opportunity, because we have the right to speak, as you said, freedom of speech, but nobody listened. You know, everybody voted, they talked, we're going to keep going on forever. We got some wonderful school board in this year tonight, we got two new ones, because people did vote and wanted to change. There's proof in that way, that people can just stop and think for five minutes and say, hey, everybody does have that freedom, why aren't they listening? Nobody listened. If you guys can all take 10 minutes and think about it, every other kid around the world is just being a hole-in-one with this situation, then we have already had candy. But lay out something that we all have an opportunity to read and not just say, yeah, here it is now, it's going to be. We don't want that. That's what this country's about. The country's in total turmoil now. Why do we want people to have any candy? Give everybody five minutes to read it, look at it all, and if they don't like it, and I really believe, strongly believe, the majority of those people that were at that meeting would have given their life for any kid. It didn't have anything to do with transgender. It had to do with listening, and nobody did. If we can just take 10 minutes and say, okay, let's make a few changes in it. Give everybody in this town an opportunity to make a change if they wish to. What is it going to take to make that change? Do we have to show up with a thousand signatures and have a thousand people here to say, hey, let's just change something? It's not really at all bad. We just wanted it to be a community thing, and nobody heard. That's all I can say.
We've got a few hands, so calm. You were up and then Lisa, I'll kind of swing around that way.
Okay. Oh, pardon me. Harder to stand up every day. I really appreciate what this man just said. I didn't catch his name, but made sense, you know, we should, we should have, I don't see any way around having another hearing because the petition warrant article was overwhelmingly voted for. So I definitely see that happening, but I appreciate this point of view that there really needs to be a lot of talking. I don't know if the three of you guys, I mean, obviously you, that was a big part of your campaign. I don't know if the three of you have been talking about presenting something, and I know you're not going to answer any questions, but that's my question to you, whether you have been able to come up with something that you can present so that we go to this hearing without just a blank slate and everybody arguing. I mean, you can't do anything with a committee of 400 people, but maybe, maybe the three of you are working on something, I don't know. I hope you are. If you're daring to answer that question, that would be great, but so be it. As long as we're on the topic of this transgender policy, I do want to bring out something. I have a copy of what I believe is the packet that you all have, and if you look at the attachment, that's the Warren article that you're going to be discussing later, the attachment that I have is not correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're aware of that.
Yeah, and I know we're not going to do back and forth, but just because that was a, we, we got the copy and that was circulated to the board members. It was the incorrect policy that was in there, our article, and that's been updated constantly.
Okay, always nice to be doing business on the right thing.
I know, I appreciate it.
I do want to, want to mention one other thing, and that's, I really appreciate that you let Linds from another town speak. Linds has a great deal of expertise and a lot of depth on the, on the issue, and it addresses something, or segues nicely into something else that's in the packet. That's the B-E-D-H, I think, policy, and something that you laid out right in the beginning of that, which I think is a really bad idea. And it's not that I disagree with the problem that you have, because, you know, you obviously don't want to, and nobody else wants to stand up and listen, or sit here and listen to somebody rant. However, just shortly ago, in, I think it was in Alton, I just dug this out because it kind of caught my eye, Alton man awarded $42,000, and in the court case that that was related to, basically what happened was the Alton man came to a board of select meetings, started hammering on the, on the members of the board, and they didn't like it, so they had him arrested. That was a bad move. That was a really bad move. The ACL, you took his case, he was awarded, as I said, $42,000, because, well, as, as the ACL, he said, "In a free society, governmental officials are required to tolerate harsh criticism, and even a demeaning attitude toward them, including viewpoints that can feel like terror assassination, cannot discriminate based on these critical viewpoints." So it's just something that you might want to consider when you're looking at the B-E-D-H policy. As Dr. Littlefield said, probably better to just let people go ahead and talk and just, just let it go. Moving on a little bit, oh, I know, early on, we did the ratification, or you did the ratification. I don't think Clark is here, but I remember a lot of ambiguity around the call that Clark made on the validation of the election, and even though he's not here, I think it's worth saying, yay, Clark. He took a stand, he took the position that the safety of the town was the way that he was going to flock. A little while later, the legislature decided that there was a validation procedure. Unfortunately, a lot of reps, including some of our own, voted against that, but at least enough reps voted for it so that we have that policy in place. I'm happy to have that be the case. I want to mention Kevin Verbal. He's here tonight. That's a good thing. Representatives should come around every once in a while, just, just to let you know that they're here. I would like to point out one thing. We have four representatives, although it's easy to forget the fourth one because I don't think she ever shows up, but she's from Northwood. So we have four reps, and I would encourage the board, just as Kevin said, use them. They're there to serve the needs of the community, and you guys, being basically the governing heads of the community in this respect, should go ahead and use them as a resource. Kevin is very good about being open and responding to stuff on his website. Now, I will make no bones about the fact that he and I often disagree, but we can talk and we can put stuff back and forth, and he's got a Facebook page. It's Kevin Verbal, New Hampshire State Rep.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Not a lot of Kevin Verbal, so it's pretty easy.
Yeah, it's pretty easy to find a Verbal on, on, on Facebook. So, you know, by all means, contact him. He's very open, very responsive, and very even-handed on his, on his Facebook page. I will offer him kudos for that. One thing I wanted to point out that I don't think Kevin mentioned is the House approved full-time kindergarten and full funding for it, which I think is an important thing. Again, not all of our representatives voted for that. I won't tell you which ones voted against it. I believe it will mean about $70,000 to Candia, which is a good thing. So moving on to something that's similarly related to money, I did notice that there is, I think, a $3,000 expenditure for legal fees. I'm not sure, was that the curriculum committee's charge? If anybody knows? No?
I don't believe so. We'll...
Okay, well, that's good to know.
We'll have questions on expenditures a little later.
Okay. Okay, those are all the things except for one. I did contact, I think I sent it to all of you. I want to talk about something just for a second that really sucks. It's ticks. Ticks. We've got lots of ticks. And I, I think I sent something to you all about the, maybe a program that the state has, and I didn't see it on the agenda. I hope that you are addressing that and that you will address it.
I'll have an update for you tonight on that.
Cool. I'm done. Thank you for your patience.
I think we were going to go circle kind of around this way, so, I don't know your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Kristi Hegery, and I'm actually from Durham, New Hampshire. My address is 54 Edgewood Road, 0324. And I am here because I am a parent of a transgender child, and yes, I'm from a different district, and yes, they have a policy in place, and I just wanted to shed a little light on the impact that that makes on my child in hopes that you will not repeal the protections here at Candia, because as I have a child who goes to school every day and walks through the hallways as any typical child would, but then carries the weight of the world on her shoulder, and knowing that there's a lot in our country that is trying to push against who she is as a person, and so while she's trying to learn math and science and all the other things that, you know, a 12-year-old learns, there's a little cloud that hangs over her in concern that someone might show up at school and drag her out of the school and put her in a concentration camp. These are real concerns that our kids have. Knowing that the policies are in place benefit these kids, whether they're transgender, they're gay, or straight really, even, because the straight kids know that those policies are important to their friends who walk the walk every day and are trying to be brave and strong in who they are. And it's not easy, and I know it's not easy for everybody to understand, but as a parent who, you know, shows up to sporting events in Candia, I also would appreciate knowing that this is a community that is doing the right thing, is on the right side of history in protecting our kids and giving them a greater sense of safety and acceptance, and it means way more than you all can imagine. So, you know, keep it and know that you are helping so many kids that you may not even realize. And that's really all. Thank you. Thank you.
This way, and then Todd will swing over either.
My name's Doug. Doug Parsons, I live in Manchester. 79 Cutler Lane, Manchester, 03104. My daughter is transgender. She's in high school in Manchester, and it's going well there. Her four closest friends live in Candia, they go there. They'll be in voting age in about a year, and if they're not transgender, they'll support her. And it's not a political thing. It's just life, trying to live your life. So if she was your daughter, you would want these protections too.
Talking North Road, a couple points. Someone, I wasn't going to talk about the J-BAB policy, but it's the hot topic of the night. I'm in favor of it. I'm in favor of not repealing it. I think it's great that people from outside the community came in to educate me and the rest of this room about some of the things that we probably don't really know a lot about. Maybe I was in a different room or a different social media page than other people in the room, but if you said that you didn't see negative and you didn't hear what people were saying about a transgender child, then, I don't know, you were not in the same rooms that I was. It was a, it wasn't a pleasant experience to live in Candia when that, when that whole debacle was going down, so. For those of you that didn't hear the negative, great, but I certainly did, and I don't want to go through that again, either, I'm, I'm kind of with Sharon. On a separate topic, last time we talked about our curriculum, I guess Subcommittee that Dr. Littlefield advised against. It's my understanding that, you know, that we should move forward with that. The new board members ran on transparency and uniting the community and listening to what we had to say. I think the voice was a lot clearer that we don't want a curriculum committee, and there really was no, there's no way that you're going to convince me that any one of you know more about writing curriculum for our students than the people in the back of this room. There's, there's no chance that you will ever convince me of that. But it sounds like it didn't matter because you moved forward with that, and I was told that $3,000, that you both shook your heads that, no, that wasn't legal fees for that curriculum program that your lawyers looked over. I was told that it was. So I'm hoping that that is on the agenda coming up a little bit later. I hope that you will educate me that why you feel like that's a warrant to spend. It was, the school board passed their budget, that wasn't a line item in the budget, so it, it's a shell game at this point, but if the legal fees are coming out of one bucket, they're going to one other one. So I hope that you'll discuss that and shed some light on it for me.
Yeah, that's, just because I think it's important to make sure we understand that where that money went to.
Yeah, and, and my private conversation here was, Matt, can we break the rules just so that...
Yeah, absolutely.
Categorically, the curriculum committee has got nothing to do with legal expenditures. Any notion that we paid $3,000 to have our attorneys look over that concept is just not true. We are a complex organization. This was also a negotiations, a collective bargaining year, so we had more legal expenses than we would ordinarily have, and that's a budget transfer just to cover our normal legal expenses, which we quite often underfunds. But there's no connection between curriculum committee and our legal expenditures at all, guaranteed.
Did the legal team look over the charge that Dana was putting together?
I'm sorry?
Did the legal team look over the charge last, last meeting? You, the discussion was that Dana was going to put together a proposal and your legal team was going to look over it. That's what was discussed at the last meeting.
And I apologize for asking him to break the rules. I think we have to break the rules and say, no, that, that notion, which we heard twice, is not correct.
Okay.
About going further with it, I sort of think breaks the rules of public participation, and it would be a back and forth, which is going to get us nowhere.
So, yeah, and we'll have an update during curriculum and instruction under new business as well, so.
I'm self-employed, North Road, Candia. Since we are talking about the J-BAB, I have emailed the whole members of the board so you know how I feel. I would like to have it repealed. Common sense put into it, this policy. That's all I'm going to say about the amount of support of it, and I think the voters of Candia sold this message.
Jim, I think that's you, by the way.
Yep. Contrary to this gentleman, I would like to ask the board to please keep transgender policy in place. Jim, I drew your own main street phone.
What's, Jim? We had one hand back here. Felix, I'm just going to try to get anyone that didn't speak yet before. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, so...
My name's Masha Gaba, and I live at 5 Hills End Way in Manchester, 03104, and I am a parent of a transgender person who happened to be transgender and who passed away when he was 20 years old after much struggle in school and a lot of discrimination from the world and a lot of internal strife that, you know, that this was his life and who he was, and I would just ask you not to bring this back for repeal or revision or anything like that. You have no idea who your students are in a way. For, for us, it took us a very long time, a number of years, to determine that our child was transgender. And I just want to share that the imperativeness of the message that you're sending to young people, if you even like take this up again. I guess I'll stop there, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to share.
Jamie Edgstrom, 737 North Road. I think what's getting lost in this conversation is the lawyer was there for the entire night during that meeting, and he advised the board that that policy needed to be put in place. Whether or not the policy was in place, everything in the policy needed to be adhered to if you had a transgender student, so it covered liability and it gave the staff a sense of direction on how they had to treat this child with respect and dignity. So I think we're all forgetting that, that this is not, we don't get to choose civil rights. Civil rights are mandated by our federal government, and these children have rights. Until that is overturned, and if that's where you all want to go with this, but our lawyer made it very clear that these children have the same civil rights as everyone else, and I think that's getting lost in this discussion. We think we can choose these things for our kids in our school, but this is a public school open to everybody for an equal education for every child, not my child, not only my child, but every child. So I think that's getting lost, and we think we have so much more control than we, than we do in our community. I mean, these children have rights, and we're all forgetting that. I think we're forgetting what the lawyer said.
I actually don't know what it's that. I'm starting with myself. I've been self-employed for 30 years. I'm a painter, contractor.
Felix, just one for any, address the board if you don't mind.
I've worked for people from all over the world. I mean, all over the world, from every walk of life. I've worked for people that are gay, men and women. I've worked in construction with people that were transgender. I've known many a people that were ridiculed or whatever. These people, the main thing I've never learned from any of them is only ever wanting to be treated as fair. We're not tired of taking anything away from these kids. We all want to protect them. We want to protect everybody. Nobody's saying we want to take any of this protection away. We're saying we want the opportunity to review ourselves, plain and simple. I mean, I have literally been home with gay men, gay women, and transgender people. These people live normal lives. They're not asking to be treated specially.
These people live normal lives, they're not asking to be treated special. They just wanna be treated like human beings, plain and simple. They want their rights, they don't want them crammed down there, thrown in the dewy. These people are good people, they're good, honest people. We're not, this lady mentioned, where a kid being worried about being hard locked in a concentration camp. That wouldn't be in that kid's head unless we don't put it there. Plain and simple. Kids only see what we put in front of them. And in fact, I mean, the people I've worked for, and like I said, I've been self-employed for thirty years. I walk into people homes every day, and they trust me to be there. Why? 'Cause I'm honest. Why? 'Cause I don't give a change. For two, I do a good job, and I do it well. I don't give a sweet crap that they're gay, transgender, or anything in between, as long as they're honest people. Same as myself. These people are coming in here trying to say we're trying to take something away from the kids. No, why not? I give my life for a kid, I give my life for anybody in this room. Plain and simple. Just give us the opportunity to review it, to talk to you folks, see if we can maybe make a few changes that suits what we need in Candia. That's all, I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody.
Thanks, Felix. Okay, any opportunity, yes?
Hi, Sandra Truby, High Street. And so most of you guys may know by now, I'm a pediatrician, and so I'm actually speaking like I did at the last meeting, in support of patients of mine who are transgender, and also of my own children who are not transgender, but who attend school here. And I think one thing that I had written you guys in a, in a letter, that I think is really, really, really important to understand, is as the parents of transgender students have said here, the impact on a transgender child is something that I think none of us can understand, because it's just something that I think is really difficult to understand, and I think to know what these kids are going through is really hard. The gentleman who just left said that he would, you know, protect the life of any child, and I think one thing he needs to understand is that fifty percent of children who are transgender consider suicide, twenty-five percent have attempted suicide, and as a parent of a non-transgender child, if you like to argue that way, that you say, "Well, what about my child whose, whose rights you feel are being violated?", I think it's really important to understand that if there is a suicide in the community, other students in that same community have a five-time increased incidence of thoughts of suicide themselves, and the attempted suicide rates go up from one-point-seven percent to seven-point-five percent attempted suicide. So in fact, even if it's not the children of most parents in Candia, or maybe even any parents in Candia, if a child in the area commits suicide, all of our children are at risk.
Sandra, can you repeat those two figures?
Sure, so, so the five times increased thoughts of suicide, and then that the rates of attempted suicide, if there is one child in, in the community who has committed suicide, increases from one-point-seven percent to seven-point-five percent attempted suicide rates. That is really, really, really significant. The other thing to say, well, a couple other things, I, I've talked to the endocrinologist in the state who treats these children, Dr. Charis, and she would be happy to come talk at a meeting if it does come to that. And the second thing, along those lines, and again, I won't go into huge detail, but the kids at, at school here are through eighth grade, and so, as I said in the last meeting, if a child is transgender, or maybe transgender, there's a whole team that takes care of them, including a pediatrician or a primary care doctor, an endocrinologist, a trained psychologist, and there are specific psychologists to whom we refer patients. This is not just any therapist out there who makes that diagnosis, the parents and the child. And, you know, when that diagnosis is made, the, the first step of treatment is delaying puberty, so it is a moot point, because these kids are gonna be prepubertal, so nobody is gonna know what their genital status is when they go into a bathroom. And I think it's gonna raise more questions if you've got a little boy who looks like a girl, I mean, genitally, so born male, going into a female bathroom is gonna raise way more, I don't know if I just said that the right way around, but essentially, if the transgender child is not allowed to use the bathroom to which they identify, I can guarantee it's gonna raise a whole lot more questions to my kids. So, thank you.
All right. We have, we have one more, yeah?
Okay. I did take a long time, so I apologize for getting up again, but, two things. One is, I wanna be unequivocal that I support the original policy, even though I, you know, I assumed that the three of you were working on something else to generate, but whatever. The other, the thing that is more important is, I wanna reinforce what the doctor just said. My wife was a health teacher for a long time, and I won't divulge the particular details, but while the, the statistics are rationally more important, but to sort of bring it home to a, a more anecdotal level that we can kind of relate to, there were two different high schools that did experience clusters of suicide. So you're absolutely dead-on, pardon the unintended faux pas, but you're absolutely correct that, yeah, they tend to cluster one suicide, puts all the kids in the area at risk.
Sorry. I can, you know, I've thought, we're gonna, just to move on, we're gonna have another opportunity as well at the end of the meeting, so, in case anyone didn't have a chance. Did I get everybody? Is that first round? Okay, all right, we'll close that. And we do appreciate the comments, I think, and as always, if again, we'll have another opportunity in a minute.